The five photo array shown by Mr. Shea. We will mark this is oh two. Uh, it appears that these are marked up excerpts of. The master plan you land use element pages one thirty-two through one thirty-nine. What's showing on the screen right now is page one thirty-two.
Right, and I would ask if Josh could, if my associate could simply. Move this from page one thirty-six, uh, one thirty-two to one thirty-six. We could just scroll that to uh, then the, I think it's the next. Keep going, we miss one? Yeah, right there, thank you. Yes, right there. Okay. And I would direct you to the photo, uh, which is the, the um, uh, figure eighty-four. Um, which has um, in the legend solid green lines and broken green lines, both of which speak to pedestrian connections. Um, and the language says recommendations for improvements at large format retail site. It's actually our site Newport, and then it speaks to um. Illustrative example of Newport Center highlighting key pedestrian connections that could be continued. Through the mall site to reconnect city fabric on either side. This is express language that talks about connections through the mall. Um, and then if you look just below that, Josh, if you could just scroll up a little. Item one, which we've shown a um, um, we've crossed out some of the language. Under that line, it says extend seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth streets. And simplify mall drives east and west to reestablish movement along the city's historic grid. We've suggested that the language instead say enhanced pedestrian connectivity. Along seventh and ninth streets to expand access to the mall. There's nothing here that says, think about maybe it's pedestrian. It actually says to extend the streets. And it also appears to indicate that the existing street should be simplified. I don't know what that means. Um, although uh, Mall Drive East bends around the building. These are the kinds of things that we've asked and have been asking if. They can be reexamined, going back to the diagram, Josh, if you could just um, move it down a little. There are, thank you, there are arrows um, which do point to existing streets. Those are the solid, the green, and also to broken green. Um, along Eighth Street, there is a pedestrian connection into the garage. And along Ninth Street similarly, but there are arrows pointing along Sixth and I guess Tenth, although I don't see the number on the drawing. Which are pointing at part of our building. Um, and again, if you go to the language below that doesn't say pedestrian and, and doesn't qualify at all. Um, that is troubling, and then um, Josh, if you could go to the next page, one thirty-seven. Um, the second paragraph, uh, no, uh, that one, thank you. Um, this is page one thirty-seven, uh, the language um, starts. With future, uh, the, I'm sorry, the full paragraph. Future site modifications doesn't say complete overhaul. And any new developments on these large format areas should encourage the subdivision of these large lots. With the intent to reestablish Jersey, Jersey City's historic street grid. And then it talks about providing continuity to bike and pedestrian networks. We've suggested that that language be taken out. And the let sentence change to effort should be made to provide continuity to bike and pedestrian networks. As our planner has indicated, this is not a reestablishment of a Jersey City historic grid. Because this part of Jersey City never had a grid, it was a rail line. Uh, and it went down to the water where there were, I believe, slaughterhouses. I think we have an exhibit to show that as well. Um, and as far as continuity, you have a light rail as Mr. Shea pointed out. And to the east of that, you have intense development. Um, multi, you know, high-rise buildings, mid-rise buildings, commercial enterprises, um, all of which are. Um, between our development and the waterfront. Um, and as I indicated, is also separated by the light rail. So, we don't think that this is um, drafted. With the flexibility or the language doesn't convey the flexibility that we've heard repeatedly is the intent. Of this um, this section. Um, and if someone were drafting an ordinance to be consistent with this, it appears that. Um, if you didn't follow this mandate. You might arguably be said to be inconsistent with that, and that's extremely troubling. Um, not just for us, but people who read about it. Existing tenants, future tenants, people we would like to be tenants at the location. So there is an immediate um, economic impact and the potential for greater impacts. Um, so that was one of the, we have a few others, I, I can show you the others, but in many piece places. What we've tried to do or would like to have done is elimination of the absolutes in this provision. Uh, on page thirty-five, it says, any future modifications to the layout of large format retail areas. And then it goes on, again, any, that doesn't speak to flexibility, that's on page one thirty-five. Um, so um. Our request really is that the language that's drafted that will bind us going forward when the good intent. Uh, the good intentions um, uh, uh, expressed here. Um, are not shared or people have a different view. And suddenly it may be convenient to have this damaging or this, I'll say, inflexible language. Um, uh, so we would ask that, uh, you know, we can provide all of these changes. Um. Um, again, on page one thirty-seven. Um, site, as outlined above, site modifications to establish connections that were once severed. And extend street vitality through programming can provide contemporary and experiential retail environments. The mall is providing contemporary and experiential retail environments. And we don't need subdivisions of the mall with new streets in order to, which, which. Create a new grid that never existed and can still not provide any access to the waterfront because of. Existing infrastructure and structures that have nothing to do with the mall. Um, then I think that um, if the language reflected the flexibility, we'd be fine. That's not what it says. Um, that's one of our areas, I told you, there were three, we mentioned the other one, Paul spent some time on it. Um, if, uh, Josh, if you could pull up, I think our pages that were done in. Uh, these were red, I think, green. Uh, our, our other revised page thirty-four with the green on it. Um, this is the language I referred to previously. Um, where it spoke of all public facing buildings. Um, and any frontage on internal streets. Um, should be treated and adapted to engage pedestrians and extend the city's street grid. At the very least, it should have qualifying language that takes out the all. And starts with public facing buildings and frontages to the extent practical. To the extent realistic, to the extent that it doesn't um. Result in circumstances that preclude the adapt, the um. Uh, modifications and enhancements of the mall that I think everybody. Um, wants to encourage, not discourage. Uh, similarly. Um, there is just, you know, again, some of our recommendations. Um, on the bottom right, uh, it talks about. Um, transforming roadways, but then it goes on to talk about. That this would require street design, this is lower right-hand corner, page one thirty-four. As well as establishing density and design considerations. That will allow buildings and others to orient their front doors along these roadways. But it doesn't say we're practical and it starts the sentence with, the sentence above with saying. Any future development on these sites. Uh, finally, uh, Josh, if you could pull up one thirty-five. Our third concern is these references to uh, circumstances such as vacant buildings. Or unneeded or um, uh, excessive parking because we don't have apparently. Uh, or there's a belief that there may not be users in the building. Um, under the draw, under the, I should call it rendered photo perhaps. Uh, that is part of your plan on page one thirty-five, it's figure eighty-three. Um, if I were reading that, I would not know that there already is textured sidewalk. I wouldn't know that there's already a um, pedestrian um, path through. The um, uh, the parking lot, uh, garage which is lit. Uh, and is in accordance with the board and the city's requirements of us when this was um, first developed. Uh, and then there is the paragraph to the right, under that figure eighty-three. Which says, given that some big box independent retail establishments are transitioning away from urban areas. And or adapting newer retail formats. It could reduce parking demand and allow existing parking structures to be reimagined and other uses such as parks. Playground and other public venues. But that's not just a statement somewhere in a document, it's a paragraph that is specifically under. A figure which is a photo of, a rendered, I'll call it modified photo. Of my client's property and its mall. Um, and when you read all of these things together, I'll say what I said to the beginning. Uh, you, reports of, of my demise were, are exaggerated. This is all premised upon an anticipated failure and how to deal with it. And as Steve said, this is fixing a problem that we don't believe exists. And fixing it in quotes with mandatory, even though these are recommendations. They are establishing policy and those policies are very troubling to us. And we think that they bode ill, uh, that they undermine the very objective. That we've heard repeatedly espoused this evening in terms of the importance of this mall, the role it plays. It's an economic engine, it's a social gathering place, it's an uh, income generator to the state and the city. And yet we really don't think that when you read these requirements as being applicable as they are expressed. To each and every modification, to each development and arguably to each application. That they are going to further that objective. We would ask that these four or five pages be taken out and be marked for further, you know, for further revision. Um, I don't think it precludes action on the other three hundred pages. But I think it's very necessary, and we would ask that the board consider that this evening. Um, and we will work expeditiously. Um, to provide the information that your planners or your staff, your consultants. Need to understand why we are so concerned with this and work with us to implement language that will address those concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gonchar. Um. Liz, do you want to address or uh, should we bring somebody else up?
I'll, I'll jump in, uh, Chairman. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to, uh, I guess, respond with just a, a couple things. Um, so, uh, I heard that there was um, uh, well, there is a repeated. Um, concern with the verbiage that goes something like. Uh, any street or any road or any facade should um, be. And then it makes the recommendation. Um, so should per our LDO is defined in three, four, five, dash, five. Uh, word usage, it is uh, not a requirement, it is a recommendation. Um, as it is defined in our LDO. Um, I also want to point to. Um. The local redevelopment housing law. Um, forty A, colon, twelve A, dash, seven D. All provisions of the redevelopment plan shall be either substantially consistent with the municipal master plan. Or designed to effectuate the master plan. But the municipal governing body may adopt a redevelopment plan which is inconsistent with. Or not designed to effectuate the master plan by affirmative vote. Or a majority of its full authorized membership with the reasons for so acting forth in the redevelopment plan. So, uh, regardless of whether or not these are construed to be uh, requirements. I think the language is clear that they are recommendations. And uh, for what it's worth, I think the board should take that into consideration as well as the clause um, from the redevelopment law. Thank you.
Uh, I appreciate that, if I can respond. I think what you've just confirmed is what I said at the outset, that while the municipality. May adopt something that's not substantially inconsistent, it places a higher burden. And it requires an explanation for why it's being adopted inconsistent. And my point is simply, yes, should. Um, but this is a should directed at what the governing body should put into its zoning. Uh, that's how I view this, that it's the recommendations. That are directing from the planning document to the zoning document, what should be included in there. That's when they become wholly mandatory, but here also it does not carve out in all places. It speaks to any future development, the fact that it uses the word should, I believe. It's telling the township, the, excuse me, the city, what it should do when it implements. What it should include in its zoning, and that's why we have a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council, we don't disagree with what the redevelopment laws is.
Uh, nor do I, we just have to live with it.
Correct. Chairman, do you want to hear from any of the other? Members or witnesses? Chairman, you're muted.
Thank you, thank you, on many things, um, that's one of them. Um, I, I think I would, I, I definitely like to explore the. The language of, uh, you know, the historic aspect of the street grid there. Um. There certainly wasn't a street grid that existed to the east to begin with. Um, but I, I am. And I, I'm, I'm trying to go through emails on this, um.
We did send in a diagram to that effect, Mr. Chairman, if that's, I don't know what you were looking for, we did submit a, a. Diagram that showed the historic site, I don't know if, if that's what you meant when you were looking, it was sent in, uh, last week.
Um, no, I, I just, I wanted to point to language that was, and I can't remember where it was off the top.
Okay.
Um.
Was it from me? Sorry for interrupting.
It might have, uh, it's not the one from, when was it, today?
Oh, yep.
No.
Okay.
But no, that's, that's part of it too. Um, no, there was a. I think it was, um, Santo had shared something with me earlier in the week, maybe, yes, yeah, it was yesterday. Um. It's, maybe if we want to start talking about the street grid and, and I'll see if, um, if I can come up with, uh. The rest of my thought here, okay, guys, I apologize.
Chairman, for the record, what I had forwarded to you was Mr. Ms. Gonchar's January fourteenth letter. Which had an attachment, uh. With, I believe Mrs. Gonchar, there were two separate. Attachments to the letter. Or to the email, one was the letter and the other was a. I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, yes, for clarification, what we had provided was. Um, we, we had provided various pages of this master plan without our markings. Just because we didn't know how hard it would be for the board to pull up specific pages out of the three hundred. Um, and we had also provided an exhibit which was an overlay of the mall. Um, over the rail lines. Um, and I think there was another one which. Um. I'm gonna ask. Steve, if you recall, oh, thank you. Okay, this was one of them, which was the um. The um, the street, and then I think there was a second one that had the overlay, that may have been the, um.
Okay, so.
Oh, this was, that was the other one, these were just the things that were sent, this is what it looked like in, uh, nineteen eighty-seven, if we. We did submit these to the board, my next question was going to have been whether those are part of the record, so.
Um, let's make them part of the record right now then.
Yeah, so.
Oh, three?
Let's mark it as oh three, we'll start with the transmittal letter of January fourteenth. Submitted by council. Along with the six-page PDF identified as the. Newport PB hearing materials one underscore two two.
Yep, and again, this is what we were, just, this depicts what we were trying to explain, you can see it somewhat light in Fuchsia. Uh, where the parking deck is and where the actual mall proper is. And um, you can see that, uh, I'm not sure with the round things, but the rail lines start. And beyond us, there, beyond to the east, there is no grid there, I think I made reference to a slaughterhouse. Um, and I think that that's one of those long buildings. Um, anyhow, they were industrial docks and, and other industrial uses moving east. Um, and of course you can overlay here where the light rail is and where other development has happened to the east of us. Between uh, the mall and the um, uh, waterfront. So, this was just in anticipation of this evening. Uh, if you'd um. Like anything else with regard to that, the other was just to show you the, a photo from when um. Simon first came in, what was there when it uh, uh, built up the, uh, the mall.
So, I'm just going back to that map. The extending roads language and the testimony that was put on the record by your planner wasn't exactly correct. I read, a grid did exist where the parking deck was located, it just didn't extend through the mall. Is that what, is that what you're showing?
And it ended, so it did not connect to anything except.
So the language in the plan isn't incorrect. It is maybe half correct, I guess, but it's not incorrect.
Yeah, man, if I could jump in, I think.
It appears to me that it extends through the parking deck and to the rally yard.
Yep.
That's where the street went to, to the rally yard, and it looks like at least one of the streets. Exactly where the arrow for the Newport Center. Verbiage, that street, that avenue goes through the entire rally yard. Scroll.
Yes, that would be Povonia.
Right, and what we. What we indicated was that it would not connect at this point because of the rail. And because of the other development that's already taken place. Uh, beyond us, the comments had been to be able to continue to connect to street grids. To the east and to the west, and what we said was, going to the east, we are not what blocks. The um, grid beyond us to the east. The light rail is the, is one impediment, and the fact that there is development. You cannot get to the waterfront, and it isn't because of the mall, beyond the mall, you could not get to the waterfront, you would still end. At the rail, the light rail, or the many buildings that had been constructed to the east.
So, Miss Gonchar, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not questioning that, all I want to clarify for purposes of the record, which is what I believe Mr. Ward was trying to state. Clearly, the historic street grid went through the parking deck. Povonia Avenue, based on this document, clearly ran pretty much to the river.
Yes, but I don't think that's the, I understood the grid to be not just a street. But connecting to a grid with a series of streets going in both directions. Our point was simply, there still is a connection, there's a pedestrian connection that goes all the way through the mall now. From the rail line out to, uh, Marin, so there is a connection now. I think the point was reestablishing the grid and pre- preventing. Uh, uh, excuse me, permitting um, the continuation from neighborhoods to the west to the waterfront. I think our point was that there was not a fully established grid and that we are not the impediment. That prevents that, that you could not get to the waterfront. Going through the mall, you would run into other impediments, both infrastructure and structures, that was our point.
Fair enough, Council, I'll just leave it at, I'll allow the experts to define the grid. But I think, you know, picture's worth a thousand words and.
Absolutely.
We're looking at it.
Erin, um, in anticipation for, I guess, um. This, we did look at the document to try to make some modifications, I think Liz can bring up. Um, some of the things that we tried to address. I know we keep talking about the grid, we honestly thought the best way to deal with it really was to talk about the fact that we were talking more about the adjacent neighborhood. Maybe not necessarily the historic grid, um, it's an historic neighborhood, um. And uh, I, I'm just gonna let Liz walk through that, I, I, I kind of have a sleeping baby. So I'm trying to be a little quiet here, sorry.
Yep, so some of the markups, um, that we were looking at were, so this is page one thirty-six. Um, swapping out the word historic for adjacent property and then um, reestablish pedestrian movement. Um, in this area as well, and then there was some language um, on page one thirty-seven.
So Liz, just before you. Just before you go too far ahead. Let's identify what we're looking at, and is this different than? What was being shared by Council?
So, this is um, different in that it does not have their markups on it. In terms of, it has some bubbles that they've previously put on this document, but it doesn't have the strike through. That we just saw on what they just presented. Um, but yes, this is a. Few pages.
This is a further markup. Different than the other one, so let's mark it for purposes of the record, let's keep it clean.
Got it.
Uh. Chairman, do we mark anything on our behalf other than A one?
No, we have not.
So let's make this A two, it is page one thirty-six and one thirty-seven. Of the master plan land use element with modifications identified in bubbles. With some edits.
Yes, the, the red text is the edits, and then there's some strike through, um, also struck out, uh, red text.
Okay. And the purpose?
The purpose is, um, following, um, some conversation with the. I was not a part of this conversation, but I marked up this document following that conversation that Tanya had. Um, with Newport's representation was um, looking at um. This concern about using the word historic grid, so we struck the word historic and put in adjacent. Um, and then also just to emphasize that it's pedestrian movement and that it's not, um, necessarily a, a road. Um, for, for vehicular movement.
Miss Contra, had you seen this?
Nope.
Okay.
No, we, we prepared this, um, just now, I, um, earlier today. And then, um, we had looked at, um, str- just striking this, this language here altogether. So this bubble was a bubble that their team had provided as we have a problem with some language here, and then we. Eliminated some of that language. And then there's another set of bubbles on this page. We did not make any modifications within that bubble.
So I guess, Chairman, the question that you and the board may have is. This Gonchar showed marked up pages of the land use element. That you were seeing for the first time this evening. As staff had the opportunity to see those markups. Clearly, there was some conversation that resulted in you being provided bubbles of that text. That you have now marked up his offer, but, uh. It looks to me like those bubbles were the bubbles that we were showing on oh, three?
Um, this, I had bubbles from, uh, some version. I've never seen the version that their team presented today. Um, maybe someone else from my team has, but I myself personally have not. But these bubbles, I believe they have bubbles in same locations.
You copied our bubbles.
Fair, no fair.
I still, I, I, I will say that I, I still think that there, it's certainly helpful to take out the subdivision language that is. Comforting, um, but it goes on to still talk about extend existing street. I don't know what existing street activity is through these sites. Um, and, and I guess my question is, so are we reading the diagram correctly? That although they've clarified that it's pedestrian, they are still, um. The, the recommendation is still that, um. That the. Pedestrian access is be provided through the deck that don't exist.
You know, if I may, um, again, I, I, I want to keep my comments limited in this document is what it is, and it's essentially is the planning board at this point. Um, the pedestrian access points, not the street, not vehicular, is really what we were aiming for. Um, in the event, uh, the deck doesn't make modifications or over time. Our goal really is to connect the community that is surrounding with the mall. Um, not even necessarily, nope, not even, not necessarily, just not even to go through the mall. Um, except for that one primary entrance that already exists, pedestrian freeway that goes to the water. We're not even a hundred percent concerned with getting people through the water. We are concerned about getting the neighborhood to the mall and connecting it. Um, so where the concern is, I'm not a hundred percent sure anymore because, uh, there is, uh, an entrance right now that it does exist. A pedestrian kind of cut through. Um, if you've been in this area, if you've, uh, kind of walked through, you can tell that it's not really obvious. Um, and, and so I think the goal and the intention here really is to kind of unite the neighborhood. Um, make it more pedestrian friendly, safer, um, and get the people folks walking to the mall. Um, and that's why we changed it from vehicular to pedestrian to kind of highlight that that is definitely our intention.
Okay. I, so we're just trying to marry the diagram with this, the language as it's now being proposed. That's. Um, that was the, the reason for the question because, um. Actually, I thought that there's, um. Is a firehouse or something on one of those streets, but okay, if we can put that back up. Seventh Street, I don't know that that goes through, but you've clarified that, uh, what the intent is. Were there any other, um, of the modifications from what we, um, proposed this evening? That the planning board would be willing to consider to address our concerns?
Um. Before I say that, uh, I, I did find what I was looking for. It's actually. Uh, it's on page one thirty-three. And go down to the second paragraph. Under large format retail. And it's.
One second, Chairman.
Sure, sorry. I know, I've been staring at it for a couple of minutes now.
Miss Gonchar, can you share or can your associate share oh, three? And go to page one thirty-three?
One thirty-three.
Josh, do you, did we, I don't think we had changes on it. Did we scan that in for you to be able to? If not, it's in that email that, um, that we just marked.
It is in that email.
Mister Chairman, if I may, I actually have it ready to go.
Oh, thank you.
Even better.
Everyone see this?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, I'll just orient everyone. This is where I think the chairman was talking about.
Yes, so if we go down to that second paragraph.
Oh, wait a minute. We thought that, excuse me, but we thought the language at the introduction, which discussed the demise. Of bricks and mortar had already been taken out. We must be looking at it, at other language. We have a bigger problem, but go ahead.
Oh, I, I, you know what? You, you may be correct, and I apologize for that, um, if this is an, on older version.
I, I'm taking this from.
Yeah, yeah, that's the older version.
Yeah, I'm taking this from the email that, um.
I'm gonna let someone who has the more recent. I'm, I'm sorry for injecting confusion.
All right, Josh, do we, do we have page one thirty-three in the ones we had up before? Cause we didn't make changes to that page, so therefore it should be clean, even if it was part of our bubble collection.
I'm gonna pull it up right now. One second. Sorry, having a little wifi issue in the office.
That board would have been on the easel already.
You're, you're, you're speaking longingly of live meetings, are you? Is this one thirty-three with, for some reason, are the diagram disappeared, but.
It is.
It is.
Is the language that you're looking for there, Mister Chairman?
Yes, the second paragraph. If we can zoom in on that second paragraph.
Now we lost the whole page.
I, I can.
Give me one second. I'll, I'll reload the document. I don't know why it's doing that. One second.
If you'll allow me, I'll just start reading it.
Okay.
Okay, so given their size and scale of operations. It is prudent for the city to work with owners of large format retail properties to plan for their short and long-term future. To ensure that these areas continue to thrive as active community serving uses. In addition, longer-term planning should explore opportunities to establish and strengthen physical connections. Between large format areas and surrounding neighborhoods and streets. The following urban design principles can guide to the longer-term responsible evolution of these malls and big box, uh, big boxes in the city. So that second paragraph is what I'm highlighting here. And I think that just speaks to, you know, the fact again that this is, this plan is the wish list. For. The city to move forward in partnership. With the Newport Mall and the other large format retail users in the area. And that we will continue the conversation. We will continue the conversation, be open. Um, I, I think I'm more than happy to, uh, put the changes that. Liz showed earlier, um. The last change I would be open to is, uh, Miss Conchar, you refer to the areas where. Uh, should is used.
But no, I think, well, Mister Chairman, if you're referring, if I, we're referring to what I think you are. It was in locations where it said any future development, um. Should, where it used any or all when dealing with, um. In particular, these outward facing, this is on page one thirty-four. Is that the one you were?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about, but I'm talking about the word should. And it was brought up to us earlier that the word should is too definite. And, you know, Matt did read the definition of should. And from a layman's point of view, should is should, should is, you know, it's pretty definite. So. I'm in the construction industry. And one term that we use all the time. Are should and shall. And in building code, should is definite, shall is a suggestion. So I would have no problem changing those shoulds to shalls. Because this is a suggestion. It is. It, it's, it's the city and the planning board and the planning department trying to work with large format retail. I don't want to impose. Anything that would hurt your business, hurt your client's business. But obviously, we have urban design standards that we want to look towards in the future. And we are not going to impose those. To shut your business down. That is not the intent of this board, that is not the intent of this plan. I think that second paragraph more than states that. So, uh, I would be willing to go to shall.
I think shall is taken as mandatory, and it's usually counter to may.
Yes.
Shall and may as opposed to shall and should. Um.
Matt, Matt?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Is shall and should?
Shall, shall is a requirement, may is. Is a recommendation.
Okay, so I learned a new word tonight. I will go with may.
But one question, Chairman, um. So you read that paragraph, and it does speak to the generality and the flexibility that everyone's referenced earlier. But then there are three other pages that, uh, Council, uh, Miss Conchers mentioned. Which seems to still be in question. Uh, tonight we saw, I, I believe we saw Liz, you know, make a, or present a change that, uh, Miss Contra and her team had not seen prior to tonight. So, I mean, I mean, I don't know if those three or four pages, as we said before. I mean, if we want to get it right and we want to respect every constituency, you know, do we say to, you know. Uh, hold off, but then, you know, work it out, get to the fine points, or, you know, just say, hey, look, you know, that's it.
I. I don't feel comfortable just pulling random pages out at this point. I would be okay with. Because ultimately, it is our document. And I, believe me, I, I'm more than willing to, to show flexibility here. I, I understand the Newport Mall is, you know, a mainstay. A- and responsible, partially responsible for. You know, the growth in Jersey City that started twenty years ago. So I do recognize that, and. I would be willing to work. On language that we could both live with. But. I'm not willing to just pull pages out tonight. I, I would have no problem changing the, the few things that we just discussed. Um. And I would be open to revising in the future. But this is the document in front of me tonight, and this is the planning board's document. And I think we've made a few changes here, and I, I. I would move to go forward.
With the condition that it's possible to amend it if need be.
We've amended the previous re- previous master plan, I don't know how many times. So I'm certainly open to it. Um.
May we ask for one more change that may not be as dramatic? Um, back on page one thirty-four. You could talk about me after I leave, but let me try to get to this.
No, 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 this is. This is how it works, I, I'm. The process.
Um. Under the diagram, your, uh, figure eighty-two.
Hmm.
Where it speaks about the publicly, um, um. The language, all public-facing building edges and any frontage on internal streets should be treated. Adapted to engage pedestrians and extend the city's street grid to the west. If the any and all came out and there was some qualifier to the extent practical, so that we're not arguing this when it's a second or third story, it's a concern. Uh, when there are areas where operationally, aesthetically and planning, it might be lovely to have those things. But operationally, we don't want to be pressured, and this is the leverage that someone mentioned before. So if that could be modified as well to take out the absolute, the all or the any.
Um.
Or change the should to may.
If you could. Could you point me to that?
I'm sorry, yes.
Um, one thirty-four.
On one thirty-four, um, oh, maybe I said it wrong. Give me a moment. It's, uh, nope, one thirty-four, uh, under. The, the, um, the language under di- figure eighty-two.
Mm-hmm.
To the right. It starts with large floor plates, break up the finer residential fabric and create inward-looking developments. With limited public accessible spaces, and then it starts a new sentence. All public-facing building edges, and I think it says any, I scribbled over it so well, any frontage on. Um, internal streets should be treated adapted to engage pedestrians and extend the city's street grid to the west. Um. We would ask that the all be taken out and the sentence start with public. Um, and then take out, I think the word, somebody correct me, I. Yeah, now I can't read it because I'm old. Um. Yeah, take out, so it's public, this is our recommendation. Public facing building edges and frontage on internal streets should be treated adapted to engage. Pedestrian and extend the city's street grid to the west to the extent practical.
I will meet you halfway with a may instead of a should.
Chairman, might we, uh, consider hearing from staff on that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Or the consultant?
Matt, do you want to address? Or anybody, Susan?
Um, I, Mister Chairman, I don't object to, uh, the addition of the as practicable or, or the may. E- either one, I think, would achieve the intent, which was not to require a street to go through an active mall.
Okay.
It's, it's really about pedestrian connectivity and.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I, I, you know, I don't remember when we. First talked about this, but that was the intent.
Right.
I sat in this very chair and probably sat in that very chair, um. Um, so I, I. I agree, um, Miss Contra, what, what's the language you're talking, you're talking about here?
Um, if we could just put it back up, it's easier. It was taking out. Um, we'd be happy to have both, taking out the, sorry, Josh, to do this again. It's the, um, to the right. Large floor plates break up. It's the second sentence. Public facing building edges and frontage on internal street may be treated, adapted to engage pedestrians and extend to the extent practical.
Right. I mean, it was certainly never the intent that you would require upper level stories that have no connection to the sidewalk to somehow require pedestrian access.
Sure.
Ground level and and as practicable, I think is fine.
Okay, if we can move on after this, I'm fine with it.
Second that chairman.
Yeah. Um, look, we'd love the opportunity to work through other language in this, um, you know, and deal with them. You've expressed your reluctance to do that. You know, it's, I understand you were looking at some of our language. We were, we're looking at language that we, um, you know, that repeats other places and, um, so again, we think that the the better way not to have to amend it going forward, which is a process you folks have to go through all the steps again. Um, if there was a way to work further on these pages. On the other hand, I am not going to say no to the changes that have been made. We think it addresses some of our concerns.
I think either way, whether we, you know, took them out tonight and amended them separately or amended them tonight. E- either way, the process continues.
Okay.
I just don't know what the
I hear.
Forward is. Um, I think for me, the the reasonable thing to do is talk about the language changes that we just discussed. And, you know, we're certainly open to talk.
We will likely take you up on that. We appreciate that and the movement that we have made. We appreciate your understanding, our concern.
Obviously.
Our commitment to the mall and our concern with the, you know, the possible negative impacts of some of these, um, if.
Sure. No, that's believing the first, first thing from my mind. Are those, uh, you know, I don't want to cause any negative impact. Okay.
It's amazing you did that in ten minutes.
Okay. We were, uh, about to open up public comment. Ms. Concha, are we, um, are we good?
We appreciate your time, all of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate yours as well. All right. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. I have three hands raised. If we could start promoting people. And once again, if you want to comment on the land use portion of this plan, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Chairman, is now a good time to tell, uh, council that he's not going to get reached or want to string him along a little longer?
No, I asked Matt to reach out about an hour ago. I don't know if that happened, Matt, did it?
Yes, we, um, I heard back from, um, Mr. Pizzillo that they agreed to carry. And Mr. Don't, I did not, I'm sorry, I did not. At the time, I didn't reach out to Mr. O'Connell, um, because uh, I didn't, I thought we might get there, but I'm not sure now.
Or way past. Um, okay, i- if we could reach out while, uh, while we do public comment, Matt, I don't want to stop this train.
Okay.
And hi again, Charlene. And if you could just, uh, state spell your name again for me one more time?
Charlene Burke, C H A R L E N E B U R K E.
Thank you.
Ms. Burke, good evening once again. Uh, just to reiterate, you are sworn in already tonight uh, and are still under oath and we have five minutes for you.
Well, thank you again. It's been a wonderful evening spending with all of you here.
I'm back in two weeks then.
Good to see you, Charlene.
Uh, good to see you. Um, in my comments are regarding the R one, um, zone in particular, because that's where we as a neighborhood have had the most amount of problems with uh, inappropriate infill housing going in after knockdowns of individual homes. And I noticed in reading the evaluation that, you know, it's saying that there's been a lot of variances, um, offered for the R one zone or requested and that are granted. Well, yes, a lot of them, um, they are multi-families that are going in in neighborhoods inappropriately. We've had a problem with this. We have neighborhoods who come out against this. And because there's no standards, they they get these variances and then next thing we know, we have a mid, a mid-rise going in amongst our homes. And so I would really like to see, recommend it here, some form-based zoning. So that this way, if there's a pattern of houses on the block and one happens to be bought and then knocked down, it either, well firstly, maybe would not encourage a knockdown. But secondarily, it, anything built would look aesthetically like the other homes. Um, I know here it's recommending, yes, there's more three units in many of the R one zone areas. And yeah, the bayon boxes bring that on. They have made for an illegal third unit behind that garage. That has been an excessive problem in Jersey City all over the place. And we fight it in our neighborhoods, but it's very, very difficult to get anyone out here to correct the problem, unfortunately. As you well know, we're just overstretched with inspectors and correcting these problems, they go away and they come back again. So I really think some of these evaluations and recommendations, recommendations are misplaced. And I would really like to see that this form-based zoning would actually encourage some of our unadulterated blocks that have wonderful patterned houses down most of the block or the entire block, the way brick rows are downtown. And when you see those long shots of all those front porches, if you were to do the same thing on the west side, you'd get some of those same type of shots of a repetitive house front. And I would really like to see that preserved because in the historic preservation portion, they only recommend three historic districts. They're not talking about perhaps some of these other blocks where these homes are in this, in these groups could be considered a block or two, a small historic district. Um, one that actually preserves the housing from the eight eighteen hundreds, the eighteen nineties or the nineteen tens. But I lived on Woodlawn Avenue. There's a group of those, um, brick. They're brick couplets with rounded fronts. They're adorable. There's only like ten on each side. But you know what? That's an area that should be considered historically preserved. Because they don't have front, they all have front yards, front gardens. They don't have driveways. Nobody did a dig out and put their car there. So would be wonderful if there were more of the historic preservation recommendations for these little sections of the city that are just charming. But I don't see that in this, um, recommendations. And I'm very disappointed in that. Because again, I know, um, Chair, when you were talking about the curb cuts, that bayon box re- really exploded the curb cuts in Jersey City because when it became allowed around two thousand, everybody got very envious of the knockdown in the newly built house that has a driveway and a curb cut. And all of a sudden on Saturdays and Sundays, their front yards were disappearing and they were getting driveways put in because nobody's around looking for any kind of illegal activity. And nobody reports them and nobody says anything. And as a result, we have blocks that have lost all their front gardens to these curb cuts that have become a big problem. And it's unfortunate.
So that was your, that was your five minutes.
Okay.
But I
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. I I completely agree on the curb cuts. Believe me, they they make me crazy. Um.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could just respond to very
Sure, go ahead.
Just want to, for clarification, um, I think you were mentioning on Woodlawn and and some other pockets of the city. Um, those, those really beautiful sort of curved two-story, um, buildings and and that's exactly where we were talking about. Um, that typology that's in the R one currently. And one of the recommendations is to create a new zoning district to preserve that, that type of building. Um, they are in in small pockets really throughout the heights in the west side. They don't tend to be, um, a significant enough area to really perhaps be a standalone historic district, but I think they're certainly worthy of protection. We wanted to make sure that we were, you know, trying to address, uh, some of the threats of demolition uh, for that type of building. So it it is addressed in the plan in that fashion. Uh, and then the other thing I just wanted to just touch on is that I think the form-based approach is, it's a great point. And it's something that I think, um, as as the staff proceeds with implementing some of the recommendations on R one, which is going to be a whole process. It's it's complicated. Um, I think that they will be looking at potential, um, potentially a form-based type approach. You know, recognizing that a lot of what, um, you know, what the recommendations are coming out in the land use element. It's really about, you know, stopping demolitions, preserving the the character that's there, you know, the the pattern of the buildings, not having a proliferation of curb cuts. A lot of that really does lend itself to a form-based approach. So that could be something that is considered, uh, in implementation.
Sure. A- and Ms. Burke, I know how much work you put into the the historic district over on the west side there. To to zone it the way that we're talking tonight. I- it's, I think it's an easier easier get than it is to create a whole different historic district. Um, and if if you're here for it, I'm here for it. Uh, I'm a hundred percent in on that. I think it's a great plan to to zone them specifically, those those few sections like that, rather than an entire historic district. That being said, let's, uh, continue on with public comment if we could.
Uh, we have Mr. Kern Weisler, Weisman.
And Kern, one more time, have you just stated spell your name?
Uh, sure. It's Kern, K E R N, Weisman, W E I S S, a man.
Thank you.
Kern, good evening once again. Uh, we have five minutes for you and just, uh, so you're aware, you have been sworn in already tonight and are under oath.
Yeah, uh, thank you. I'm aware.
Thank you.
Uh, and and and, uh, Chairman, I would ask just made a little bit of leeway. I'm actually speaking on behalf tonight of the entire RNA Development Committee. Unfortunately, some of the other folks with children stuff, uh, couldn't attend tonight or stayed this late, I should say, so.
Kern, if I could, and I'll, I'll refer to council on this too, um, we, if you were going to speak on behalf of RNA, it couldn't allow someone else from RNA to speak as well.
Right. Uh, it, yeah, so so anyone else speaking would just be speaking individually, not on behalf of RNA. Uh, or 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 are you saying that that if I was to speak on behalf of RNA, that the the board wouldn't have, I I'm speaking on behalf of the RNA Development Committee, not the board. I'm not, I'm not on the board anymore. I'm I'm on the RNA Development Committee, which reports to the board.
Uh.
Why don't you just make your personal comments?
Okay.
We'll see if anybody else has any.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Let's see where we land, Kern.
Okay, that 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 that's fine. So I'll just put this on the record that I am a member. There you go. I'm a member of the RNA Development Committee, um, and I'll make my comments as as a as a member of that committee. I'm just making my comments as a resident and member of that committee. Does that work?
You got it.
Okay, great, perfect, thank you. Um, so, uh, there's, there's a lot in here, so it's a bit to get to. I'll try, I'll try to be quick. Um, so, uh, the a number of things I just want to get on the record and then I have a couple of concerns that I was hoping could be addressed. So, uh, one is, uh, you know, I I want to reiterate that and I support the idea of of everything that we said about the curb cuts. I think we all, uh, we apparently seem to have some consensus there and that's good. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, eliminating and discouraging or not incentivizing demolitions for curb cuts. I think we all, uh, seem to agree there. Um, conditional density is an important one. So I don't think, I think, uh, as mentioned, uh, going through the plan by by staff, um, I think density should be considered as as a bonus or as a a conditional aspect for certain things that are beneficial to the surrounding area in the neighborhood. So such as setbacks that have permeable surfaces, uh, restoration of existing curb cuts. Because one thing this doesn't address uh, is how necessarily is how you're going to get back all the you know, curb cuts that are already there. So you get more on-street parking, right? So, but one of the ways to do that is to incentivize it, right? To say, well, you you know, if you don't demolish the house, if you provide permeable surfaces that deal with, you know, for the flooding and all that. And then you you have some green elements like, you know, a tree and all that, and then you restore the curb cut. If you do those types of things, y- you and you're not demolishing the house, you can get this additional density, you get this third unit. So we've seen that be effective in some of the variances that have happened. They've actually carried that out and we've, uh, and I I personally am supportive of those. So I think that type, that type of, um, incentivization can be a good thing. Uh, the the next thing I wanted to speak about is the the Palisade Protection Overlay District. Um, I appreciate that was added in, uh, to the, um, master plan. I want to just emphasize how important that is to the heights and to the area that that, uh, both from below the cliff and above the cliff uh, and preserving that natural element. So I think that's, that's, it's really important that we remember the protections and, uh, the goals of that ordinance and that that, you know, consistently be referenced in the master plan. So appreciate that. Um, and then, uh, in terms of the the overlay, um, and certainly, uh, if anyone is on a call from, uh, Sergeant Anthony's Association, who who has the medical, the medical zone over by Christ Hospital, I want to say as a resident that I I support the idea of of medical being an overlay to regular zoning. So either R one in certain sections and maybe even R two D in other sections. So that you don't get the exploit of of, uh, the medical zone trying to basically, uh, um, backdoor into getting a ten-story residential building, uh, instead of actually, you know, true medical use. So I think the base zoning should be, uh, and I and I saw that recommendation, I agree with it. Base zoning should be, you know, R one, R two D, maybe R two D with a couple of adjustments with the setbacks. And then, uh, medical overlay on top of that. So you're still allowing that that use. Um, especially important if if the Christ Hospital gets sold or no longer becomes a hospital, you're going to want that zoning place to prevent, you know, say a massive high rise from going there or something. Um, and you want to, I mean, that's going to protect. Uh, the the other thing, uh, that I was going to mention from from a concern standpoint is the the, and I may have missed this and I apologize, but in the NCS that's mentioned over by the HBLR station, so specifically talking to Congress and pals, uh, Congress and, uh, Patterson Blank Road. I I don't agree with the NCS with allowing five stories around there would be fair to the existing buildings that are mostly two and three stories in in that area. So I I'm not sure that that is a great idea because you could, you can encourage, potentially encourage ground floor retail around a transit core uh, without necessarily giving them the five story of the red. So the regular NC upon Central Avenue is five stories. So NCS give, making that five stories over by Lightwell and then putting that right in the middle of a resident, you know, uh, uh, an existing R one. Not sure that that's a great idea. I I would encourage, my concern specifically is that if that gets in there, then that, then a applicant could use that as a base for a a variance request to say, well, uh, my my, you know, my variance right now is is more consistent with the master plan than the current zoning. You know, they they would say, well, the current zoning recommends that there's five-story buildings here. So uh, e- even before, I currently R one, but you know, my variance request is very consistent with the master plan. So that, that would be a concern.
So Kern, if you're, if you're close.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I I just want to say I appreciate all the work that, uh, planning and staff put into this. And and there's a lot of really good stuff in here. So I don't want to, you know, diminish that. I I just, I want to make sure I get the concerns on record. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Hey Chairman, can we announce that we're carrying all of the applications, all of them being the two other applications that will preserve the notice that there won't be any other notice? I don't know if all of these and these I'm looking at or here for those.
Yeah, I I reached out to the two applicants by email. Um, so it's So it's. Case P two one dash zero four eight two nine four Halliday Street, Attorney Eugene O'Connell. And case P two one dash four, I'm sorry, one four four. Address four nine nine dash five oh one Summit Avenue, Attorney Gerard Bazillo. They both responded that they agreed to carry the item. And and asked if we could preserve notice. And we can carry them to the next meeting, which I believe is February first.
That sounds right.
Yes, February first.
Yes, okay, so we're gonna carry. Get back to that screen, case P two one dash zero four eight, minor site plan with variances for two four, two ninety-four Halliday Street. We're carrying that to a date certain to be February first with preservation of notice. And case P two one dash one four four is a preliminary and final site plan with variances. For four ninety-nine to five oh one Summit Avenue. We're carrying that to a date certain, February first with preservation of notice. Usually Santo says this, but I'm on a roll. If you are. Here for any of those applications, this is your notice. They will not send you a new notice, this is your notice that we will be hearing those on February fir- first. I lost it at the end, Santo, I'm sorry.
Oh, you were doing so good.
I know, I had it, I had it.
About to start delegating that to you.
All right, let's move on with public comment if we can.
Oh, Matt, you're on mute, but I think you're probably gonna say, Teresa, we think we have you on the line. Hello.
Yeah, Teresa, this is Teresa.
Are you able to turn your video on or no?
Um, no.
All right, Teresa, can you swear that any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could, just give us your full name and spell it, please.
T E R E S A. P A T T E R S O N.
Thank you.
Teresa, good evening, this is Chairman Langston, I know you're calling in, you can't see me. I wish we could see you, but that's fine, I'm glad you're here and thank you for hanging in there tonight. I have five minutes for your comment.
Okay, I got five minutes?
Yes.
Okay, um, you know. I'm sitting and listening for since five thirty. The Newport Mall, their present, was that a presentation? Or were they just speaking just like I am? But their their speech took. An hour and a half. That's one point. My second point I wanted to make is that. If I want to read these documents in hard copy. Did they send hard copy to all the homeowners? How do I get this this information as a hard copy, because, I mean, three hundred pages, they just ran through it like that. The only one that came prepared was the Newport Mall, they had a copy, they went page by page by page. The community, the community doesn't, don't get those pages. What pages sent to the community?
So these documents, Teresa, my name is Santo Alampi, I am the attorney to the planning board. All of these documents were readily available. At the office and on the portal for the city. So. That is how. The Newport Mall got copies of all of these documents. The documents were not mailed out to the public. And to the various property owners. They were provided for at the planning office. And they were posted on the portal. As well as the. Website dedicated to the master plan.
So the community has to go to your portal. Or the. Or the community have to go online. What, you know, some community, a lot of the people in this community are seniors. And a lot of seniors don't have the internet. Okay, a lot of seniors have flip phones. So how would they, how are they going to know what's going on? In the community of the home that they've been owning for thirty-five years?
They they could have called the planning office and they could have been provided a copy.
They can call the planning office, if they call the planning office every day to find out what's going on, is that what they should do?
If they're trying to get a copy of a document that they want to review and they don't have the internet. Then, yeah, they would have called the planning office to get that copy. How is the planning office supposed to know that? Somebody somewhere wants a copy of the document without that individual requesting it? We don't know who does and doesn't have internet, but obviously. We we understand that people don't have internet and that is the proper channel to. To contact the city and ask for a hard copy of the document, we would have happily provided it. To anybody that would have asked for it.
So we should wait to do that, so. The homeowners. Who have been paying taxes, some of them fifty-five, sixty years. Our tax statement comes monthly, our water bill comes monthly and you get paid monthly, yearly. So you cannot notify the community of these homeowners. Of change that's gonna go on in their community, just like you do their tax bill, just like you do their water bill.
That is the requirement under the law and how it is addressed, that's all I can tell you.
And the requirement under the law. Is that you sent us a copy about tax bills, okay, and our water bill. Okay, and our sanitation garbage bill. That comes, you make sure that we're notified what's going on with that. And any changes that you make in that, you notify us of it. But you're making changes to our community and you're not properly notifying that you tell us, oh, you should have a computer. But you should know that we should automatically know that you're making changes to our community.
Ma'am, I did not say you should have a computer, ma'am, I did not say that. I said, I understand that there are a lot of people in a lot of communities that don't have access to internet and computers. I said, had you contacted the planning office, they would have absolutely provided you a copy in paper. That's what I said.
Okay, I understand that, but a lot of seniors don't know what's going on until you tell them, via snail mail. So because they're not up to up to what's going on with the with technology, they don't, they can't get this information? If they don't pay their water bill, you're gonna send them a bill, and if they don't pay their tax, and you're gonna send them over and over to remind them. But when it comes to something as important as this, you can't notify them? At all, you know their addresses, you know all the homeowner's addresses. You can't notify them of a meeting as important as this one?
Ma'am, I can only tell you what's required under the law.
Okay. Shame on you. Shame on you.
Okay, that's, thank you, and that would be your five minutes.
Of course.
Okay, anybody else, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. Once again, if you're calling in and you'd like to comment, please press star nine to raise your hands.
See, we have Jean, and Jean. Once again, if you could just state and spell your name for me.
Yes, Jean Daly, it's spelled J E A N N E, last name is Daly, spelled D A L Y.
Thank you.
Ms. Daly, good evening once again. Just for the record, you have been sworn in already tonight and are under oath, and we have five minutes for you.
Sure, um. I I if, because the Simon properties took so long, I kind of forget what was covered. On the second half of this meeting versus the first half, so forgive me if I do some overlap. I'm specifically really gonna address sort of one thing and. I know both parts of the meeting had issues about resiliency and flooding. That sort of thing. The one thing I, now the thing is, we're not gonna be able to bioswale ourselves out of away from this problem. Because anyone obviously who was around during Superstorm Sandy and the storm surge. The bioswales themselves will be flooded. Now, we did have a resiliency plan, a study rather, that was done like either two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And it actually called for a seawall. And it doesn't seem to be in any of the renderings or any discussions about any sort of seawall. As a matter of fact, there, for example. The building, the lively, I hate the name, I wish they would give numbers to buildings instead of names. But they had to retrofit their own little mini seawall. After just some heavy storm damage or some minor flooding that occurred in their building. And I'm just, I am very concerned about that, that. We're just bandaging over the real problem and we're not actually tackling it head-on. I also would just like to. Requalify a statement I made at the last time I spoke. About saying, you know, moving the. Celebrations out of Exchange Place being racist. What I did not include, which may seem why it was, might have been taken out of context, is that. The place, meeting at the Exchange Place Alliance, they actually stated that. They didn't want people from other, and I'm on oath, I'm on, under oath. At the Exchange Place Alliance, they said that they didn't want people from other parts of the city, meaning Jersey City, coming down there. And creating garbage and leaving a mess behind with them. So that's why I brought that up, and I I shouldn't have used that type of. Expression, it's not fair, it's not correct. But when you find that all these social gatherings are being eliminated from the waterfront. In, I guess for the preference of the luxury. New mega developers that are down there and the affluent, it makes one question those moves. So I just wanted to clarify that for you and apologize for using the statements that I did because it wasn't really accurate. And I just want to thank you for your time, you've done a brilliant job, so I'm signing off.
Thanks, Ms. Daly, you don't want to hang around and see if we actually vote this in?
Oh, I'll hang around though.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's funny talking about that, you know. Why did, why did people move down there in the first place, wasn't it because of? You know, diversity and yeah, anyway, all right, thank you for your time, we appreciate you coming in tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, if we could, I see one more hand raised, if anybody else wants to comment on the land use portion of the.
We have a Val promoted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey Val, let me just swear you in, all right?
Sure.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Valery Verkhovski, V A L E R I Y, last name Verkhovski, that's V E R K H O V S K I Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Verkhovski, good evening, thanks for hanging in there, we have five minutes for you.
Always a pleasure, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, good evening to all the members of board. I had a question pertaining to the, to the Bergen Hill Historic Reservation. Just wanted to know the exact streets and the implications there thereafter. What what would be, I guess, going forward, the implication of the historic reservation? You know, that was definitely my question, just moving forward as 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 someone who lives in in the, in the area. That's definitely something I'm curious about. In terms of notice. I know someone mentioned earlier. There was definitely a lot of notices, small group meetings. I know I participated in this, in the junction meeting. Which was very detailed, I have to say, it was great. A lot of, in my opinion, everything that was mentioned in the groups was brought up and and put in the master plan, which is great to see. Is definitely transparent. I had a question about the curb cuts that were discussed earlier. The issue I have is, well, the concern I have, I'll change that, it's it's a concern. That there are many curb cuts that have been Godfired in. They just stand around. They block potential parking spots and you see the vacant properties that have curb cuts. Or unused properties that have curb cuts that create. Create the issues for parking for everyone in 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 the city. How do we go forward in in the future in eliminating curb cuts? They're not in use, they're just really creating a blockade for parking in our city. Instead, moving forward, obviously, the binon box is a terrible idea. I mean, it's literally designed to remove parking from the city, and I'm glad that the city. Is seizing that light. You know, but I I I have a problem with the Godfathered curb cuts. They're underused and I'm wondering if there's anything that could be done about that. Because it also creates an unfair advantage that they may have. For all other residents that may have the same house, but just not the curb cut. And then they can't park their car, but they, but the ones that have a Godfathered curb cut can't park their car. It creates an unfair disadvantage for the residents of our city. So I'm curious as to if we, what could be done going forward with that, thank you so much.
Thanks, Val, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I could quickly answer those.
Please, thank you, I was just gonna ask.
Thanks for your questions, Val, and my my eyes are a little blurry because of the lateness of the evening, but there is a map of the potential historic district for Bergen Hill. In the draft master plan, it's on page one hundred and eighty-seven, it's figure one oh eight. And it 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 just shows generally the area, it's written in yellow, it's it's kind of on on either side, north, south of Communipaw Avenue. But the final shape and and extent of that potential historic district has not yet been determined. That would be a separate process that you'd have to go through in order to designate that historic district. And I believe it's City Council who would do that, just like a zoning regulation. It's just that that area has been determined by the state to be eligible for designation as a historic district. So you can take a look on page one hundred and eighty-seven, it'll give you a little bit of a. You know, a generalization of kind of where it's where it's talking about. To your other question on the curb cuts, it's not, it's not something that can happen overnight, unfortunately, we're removing. All the curb cuts that are that are kind of out there over many, many years, but I think one of the first steps is knowing what's legal and what's not. And that's something that the the Land Use Settlement talks about is is doing some analysis and research to figure out, you know. Who who's done it legally and who's not, and then you can go after the the folks who are not there legally to start with. And then over time, the city could consider establishing a curb cut registry. To make sure that that everything is being done on board and maybe over time as development happens, you could start to eliminate some of those those curb cuts, which may be legal. So you can't just willy-nilly take them out if they were done legally, but but knowing kind of what's out there and and what's legal and and it's not is the first step.
All right, thank you. All right, if we could, let's move on with public comment, once again, if anybody wants to comment on the land use portion that we've heard tonight. You can raise your hand, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Promoting Minnie.
Hi, Minnie. I'm doing all right, how are you?
Doing all right, still hanging in here.
Can you turn your video on?
Sure.
Great, thanks. And I just want to swear you in, all right, if you could raise your right hand.
Absolutely.
Swear any testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
M I N N I C H A L A N A.
Thank you.
Minnie, good evening, we have five minutes for you.
Absolutely, so I don't have any specific recommendations, I actually needed some clarification on two of the areas that we touched upon. One was regarding the change from R one zoning to R three zoning. Uh, specific to the Tonley Avenue between Berkeley Place and St. Paul's. Is that getting impacted as well? Currently it's zoned for R one. And we were just wondering if that is also recommended to be converted into R three. Um, the area is by Day Street and Senate Place where we have um, about five-story buildings.
And uh, Minnie, what's your other question? And we'll uh, have them both answered at the same time.
Sure. The second question was regarding the impact on West Side Avenue. There is a project that is coming into the planning board uh, next month. Uh, that we have on West Side Avenue. It's hundred by hundred thirty-two units. And two commercial spaces with about fourteen parking spots. And it's a five-story building as of right now. So looking at the changes that are recommended, six to, I believe it was six to eight store, six or seven stories. Um, should we just go back to the planning um, with the architect and, and make those changes? At this point, we just don't know what the timeline is, looks like in terms of these recommendations to get impacted.
So I can answer that one real quick if uh, that's okay. We did, I did ask that question tonight. How soon does this take effect? Uh, how soon can I start enforcing this? Uh, because I wanna start tomorrow, um, to be honest. But if an application is already in the planning office, if it's been made to the planning office. It will still fall under the previous master plan that's currently in. In effect right now. So this new one will take effect as new applications come in, starting tomorrow, Matt?
Well, the time of application kind of falls, um, the, the applicant can. Essentially uh, try to apply something that's adopted new if they, if they so wish. Time allocation is a protection for them on their behalf.
Okay, so it's the applicant's choice for the time.
Yes, but I, I would say that we probably would wait until resolutions memorialized by the planning board regarding any action tonight.
You're right.
Which is usually about thirty days from today.
Uh, should be two weeks, right, Matt?
That's the earliest, yes.
Two weeks plus a day for signatures and all. Okay, and if we could, let's uh, get your other question answered on uh, Tonley Avenue.
Yeah, if I could just get some more information, you say, you said it was on Tonley Avenue.
Between Berkeley Place and St. Paul's, that particular street. It's right next to church area. We were looking at a couple of buildings there.
Um, so I'm looking and, and I'm, I'm not sure I'm gonna have a full answer to your question tonight. But I'm looking at figure one oh two, which summarizes all of the residential zoning map changes recommended. I don't see that there is a change in that area recommended. That being said, the map doesn't have all the street names, so I can't promise that I'm looking at the exact same place. But um, but generally where there is a recommendation in the plan to go from R one to R three, for example, it's to acknowledge a building that's already there. Um, you know, that, that probably doesn't conform to R one. And so it's just, it's sort of a cleanup matter. If the ma, if the master plan has not caught every one of those instances, then the building still exists. It's, it's pre-existing, non-conforming. Um, it would continue as it, as it has existed for some time.
I also just wanna say that you have the right to come in with an application. Um, as you were talking about, but that's a devariance. Jersey zoning ordinance will apply. And um, I'm not exactly sure. Uh, you know, until it's adopted or can, or thought about by uh, the city council and the changes acted that um. You will get an approval, so.
I see. It's just another couple of weeks that we might have to wait for the variance to go through pretty much. Uh, that's one additional step, I guess.
Well, I also just wanna make sure that it's clear that in, any zoning change recommended. In the master plan would not be effective. I, if the board acts tonight and adopts the master plan, the zoning changes recommended do not become adopted. They have to be adopted by the city council, and that's a separate process.
Got it. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Minnie. We appreciate it. Alright, anybody else? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. Once again, if you're calling in, I don't see any call-ins anymore, but if you're calling in. You can press star nine to raise your hand. I did see a hand go up real quick.
I thought I saw one.
Thought I saw a hand go up. Alright, I'll give it one more call. Anybody else from the public? If you'd like to comment on the land use portion of the presentation tonight, please uh, raise your hand. And if you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Uh, I do see a Robin Hicks that.
I'm promoting Robin Hicks. Like, it seems like she's having trouble.
Yeah.
Raising her hand and it keeps going down on accident.
Okay.
Robin, you are promoted.
Oh. Did you say Robin Hicks? Did you say Robin Hicks?
They did. Did you wanna speak?
Finally, hallelujah. Eleven o'clock, thank you.
Are you able to turn your video on, Ms. Hicks?
Um, yes, I should. I look a mess.
That's right. We all feel.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Thank you.
Is that should or shall?
Oh, okay. I, I had makeup on earlier, so it's a little late.
You look dynamite. You look dynamite.
I just wanna swear you.
Hi, everybody. Happy New Year.
Let me just swear you in, alright? If you could raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you swear any testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Robin Denise Hicks.
Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Hicks.
Two, two, two things.
Sure.
I have a point. Uh, I don't know. I, I live on Holiday Street and it's always some poop in front of my door. Nobody picks up behind a dog. All around the corner and up to Ursel Reb um, Park. Public Park is called twenty-two also. The park around the corner and people walk their dogs and don't clean up. I think it's disgusting. And when you walk into the park, you're stepping in, you know, poop. Some people think it's good luck, but I, I, I think it's disgusting for it to just be attached to your shoes and stuff. Something can be done about that. And then I received a letter from Eugene Okano. I don't know if you got to that letter yet.
We actually, um, I don't remember what time we called it. It wasn't that long.
I'm sorry. I missed it. I would have to take the dogs.
No, 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 believe me. Um, we wouldn't do that to you while you were out with your dogs.
Okay, it says.
We carried that. That tonight with the, with the time.
Oh.
With everything going on here tonight, we, there's no chance we were getting to that tonight.
Okay, so I got that certified mail and.
Yes.
Yesterday I got it.
So write on your calendar.
Did you say he was gonna chair it? Did you say he was gonna chair it?
We carried it, which means we're gonna hear it on February first.
February first, okay.
Mark it on your calendar. This would be your notice. They're not gonna renotice for it.
Okay.
If, if you want to call our office, Ms. Hicks, you can call the city planning office and we'll give you information on how to access that meeting.
Okay, it's a property across the street from me. I already dealt with the property right there of Communipaw and on Holiday Street. They, they park in front of my door. They block my, uh, my um, entrance to my uh, driveway. I gotta go to work. And they blocked me in and it takes me a longer time. My boss is yelling at me because I'm late coming to work because the contractor's parked in front of my door. So I have like, almost like a three-parted going on here.
Bring, bring it all back up on February first. There's nothing we can do tonight. But uh, yeah, we'll do, we can.
Okay. And, and, and just one more thing. I'd like to get a copy, if I can, of the master plan. How, how do I do that, sir?
You, you need to call us and we can get your contact information at that time.
And, and is that correct? It's three hundred pages?
It, it's, it's a lot of pages.
It is also available electronically. If you, if you would prefer to just review it in PDF form. We can um, send you a link of where you can access the document online.
Okay, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you. We appreciate you hanging in there.
Allow me to, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else? If you'd like to comment. Please raise your hand. I think that was the last one.
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Um, anybody wanna add anything that hasn't been added already tonight? I can't believe that. There would be, but um. I don't know. Matt, Liz, Mallory, do we still have Lindsay on?
Yeah. Uh, I'll just say, you know, it feels like a closing chapter, but it's really a starting chapter to a much longer process of uh. You know, implementing this plan over the next few years. So we look forward to working with the community and the board uh, moving forward.
Thank you. Well said. Sure.
Perfect. Mr. Chair, I'd like to then make a motion at this time to accept and approve the review and discussion of updates to the master plan. Including the vision, the open space element, and the land use element uh, with the conditions that were outlined before.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Before I do a roll call, I'm just going to reiterate um, that we have nine members. Commissioner Dr. Desai, uh, as the alternate, I will be um, jumping over you in the roll call. So on a motion to approve.
The one thing on that is, I would just say is being the uh, most recently appointed. I would cede my vote to Dr. Desai if she so wishes. I could step back, in other words.
Okay.
That sound good. Dr. Desai?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so I.
But as a non-voting person, I don't know if you get a chance, I just wanna say is, I was on the board twenty years ago. And the enormity of change and challenges the city has seen. I think this, uh, that current document, the process leading up to it, has been extraordinary. And I just wanna commend all the staff and. The fellow commissioners and council for doing a heck of a job. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Lipsky. Uh, on a motion to uh, approve. As uh, amended here tonight, Vice Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, wow. Uh, this was, this was awesome. Uh, and, and this is where I've been in the board. Uh, actually, two years longer than Chairman Langston. Uh, so, um, but you know, this is one of those times where you, you know that what you do. It's, it's all, we always, in every single meeting, we know that we're making a difference. But this is one of those where you, you know, you're, you're not only, you know, this is big and you're making a huge difference for the future of the city. Uh, but the impact that, that we're gonna have with the, with this decision tonight is going to be one that's gonna, you know. Shape and define and redefine the city for many, many, many years to come. Uh, and I couldn't be prouder of our board, uh, because the amount of work that you have put into this is, is unbelievable. I, I actually didn't really have any questions after I heard you guys gave your presentation. It was that thorough. And you know, I just sat here with the, with the, with an awness of, of how amazing you guys are. So I, I do wanna thank you for doing that, being so thorough. Uh, and I'm very proud of us. And, and like Mallory said, the work, you know, just is about to begin. So we have a lot of work. You guys have a lot of work in front of you. Uh, and hopefully I'm, we're here to, to support. So I gladly uh, vote aye.
Commissioner Torres.
I disagree with Dr. Gonzalez. I think he was here longer than two years before Chris.
Thank you.
But uh, I think I was two years before Chris, but we'll, we'll worry about that some other time for the math. You know, um, I just wanna say that, you know, this was, um. Like the doctor said, um. Vice Chair said that, um. It's a little nerve wracking when you go through this plan and know what you're gonna do for the city. And being a board amazed here, it really made me feel very humble that I'm gonna, I am actually sitting on this board. And to, first things almost to the consultants. Um, that presented tonight and to planning staff. Um, when I started looking at this. Back in November, October. I could not believe during the pandemic, you guys were in parks, who's were doing this online. The amount of people you reached out to. It was, it made me nervous to be on this board and say, I gotta vote for this thing. The amount of people that showed up and stuff, it was like, it was really overwhelming. It's a great job. And um, but it makes us, makes me as a commissioner feel very um, confident. That Jersey City's going in the right direction and just like the doctor said. He's almost knocked all the questions right out of the who. There was really not too much to ask, you know? He really did a terrible job. Great presentation and uh. You know, we, we've been at longer meetings than this, so. This was uh, for good cause and yes, you have a lot of work ahead of us. I vote a very, very big aye for this one. Good job. Thank you.
Commissioner Takur.
Echoing Dr. Gonzalez and uh, Commissioner Eddie's voice that yes. Planning staff do needs a pat on their back. It was their hard work. And you know, the, the agencies that helped them achieve this goal, it was, you know. Well orchestrated and you know, great job. And I would aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Um, I'm gonna keep it short. Uh, Commissioner Torres and Vice Chair. Dr. Gonzalez pretty much summed everything up. Thank you, guys. You, oh, excuse me. Guys and ladies, you did a great job. Thank you for the public coming out and speaking. I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Well, you guys did, planning board has done such a great job, so I would like to congratulate you guys. And Jersey City was a baby where I moved to Jersey City. And I have seen Jersey City growing up into a teenager. I was going to college and now there were only two high-rise buildings in Jersey City. But now there are plenty and I've seen Jersey City growing up. So I don't know how many years it's going to go into the, what century, you know? So I'm proud of what work you have done and I'm going to say aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
I just wanna say, this is a lot of heavy lifting work. I echo the same sentiments, my fellow commissioner um, tonight. As Jersey City evolves, I can safely say that this is a very, very comprehensive plan, addressing every aspect. In addressing Jersey City future at the same time. This plan gives a lot of flexibility and options. Uh, job well done to the planning department, the staff, and engaging the community in such a time that we all went through. So thank you so much to the planning staff for always looking forward to moving Jersey City forward. Thank you so much. My vote is aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Yeah, I agree with all our sentiments. I think uh, you know, the planning staff, the consultants, everyone just did a fantastic job. Um, it makes you not just proud to be a board member, but also be a resident in the city and to see all the, you know, new beginnings and changes that are coming our way. Um, so with that, I vote honest. But also I add a special thank you to Chairman Langston, you know, for making a minute, a rather smooth day and adjusting all the uh, things came up.
And Chairman Langston. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Horton. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna echo everybody else, uh, planning staff, all the consultants. What an amazing job here, guys. Um, you know. Me and Gonzalez and Torres are gonna argue this thing. But um, I actually sat in my first meeting for the master plan, the, the new master plan. Um, prior to Anisia being director. Uh, the first meeting for this started under Marianne. And uh. You know, this is a long time coming. Um, twenty years since the last one. So, you know, I've, I've felt good about what's been happening here. Since I've been on this board, but I'm, I'm really happy with the, the vision going forward. That it's, you know, this plan is set for future boards. Um, I think that's important. And uh, you know, if anything comes out of what we do as a board here, this is it tonight. And, and planning staff and all the consultants made that a possibility for us. And and planning staff and all the consultants made that a possibility for us. Um, I I think the the future is is very strong for the city at this point. I'm very happy with this plan. I think it addresses everything we needed it to. And um, I'm gonna be quiet now and I'm gonna vote aye. And thank you for for hanging in there, everybody. I appreciate everybody for staying up so late. So it's an aye. Let's wrap it up, guys.
Motion carries all in favor.
Alright, thank you. Alright, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think I have one uh resolution is what I got anyway. Does that sound right, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so I'd like to make the motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution for the extension of interim use at ninety-nine Hudson Street, Lot one four five zero seven, Lot one. Case number on that was P two one dash zero two eight.
Alright, I would give a second. I have a motion. Second, could I have a roll call, please, for uh memorialization?
Okay, I'm just gonna stick to the same role. Uh, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye. Or. Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we need an executive session, anybody? Thank you. Um, alright, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, guys. Everybody, have a good night.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.